We call the July 24 meeting of the Portsmouth City Council Work Session to order. And we're meeting tonight, a joint meeting tonight with the Planning Commission. And so, Madam Clerk, after you call the roll, I'll ask Vice Chair of the Planning Commission to convene his meeting.
Yes, sir.
You call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Semis.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Mayor Rowe.
Chair.
Thank you.
And Vice Chair.
Acting Chair.
Acting Chair.
I'm going to call the Planning Commission to order. And Madam Secretary, if we're reading.
Thank you, Ms. Youngblood. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Youngblood.
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Here.
Commissioner Hoffler.
Here.
Commissioner G.
Here.
Commissioner Thaxton.
Here.
Five members of the Planning Commission are present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight's my great pleasure to introduce Mr. Edward Bland Jr., who's the new Executive Director of Portsmouth Redevelopment in the Housing Authority. And I think it's fortunate that we have a joint meeting. Welcome, sir, to the City of Portsmouth. If you'll go to the lectern, not to embarrass you, but I understand that you've had 35 years of experience in the housing business.
Yes.
And you come to us from Champagne.
Champagne, Illinois.
Yes, sir. And welcome to Portsmouth.
Thank you. Just a brief history of myself. Actually, I'm from the Eastern Shore part of Maryland, a little town called Vienna, Maryland. I went to undergraduate school at University of Maryland Eastern Shore in Princeuzan. I grew up probably about 60 miles from Oceana City, Maryland. Last 13 and a half years, I was, I've been the ED with the Champagne County Housing Authority, which governs the Todd County and Champagne County. The main employer never took account is the University of Illinois. That's the main campus with roughly about 55,000 students there. I look forward to working with the Portsmouth Housing Authority, to moving forward the agenda that the board want, as well as do a lot of, help to do the redevelopment that need to take place for the Portsmouth Housing Authority. And once again, I really appreciate the opportunity to come here, and I look forward to working with all of you. Any questions for me?
Well, I think it's only fair that we introduce ourselves first. And we'll start with City Council, and then I'll ask the Acting Chair to have his Planning Commission introduce themselves. And I'll start with my lap.
Yes, sir. I'm Elizabeth Semis, in my fourth term on council, and I'm a travel agency in my day job.
I'm Bill Moody. I'm in my fifth term on council. And I get paid for talking trash.
I do understand.
Hi, Lisa Lucas Burke. I'm the liaison for the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, also the liaison for the School Board and the Planning Commission. So glad that everyone is here today. I was recently elected to the City Council in November 2016. So this is my seventh month. Glad to be here looking for great things coming from the city. In my day job, I'm the Executive Director for a group home. We provide services to adults with developmental disabilities.
I'm Page Chair, Vice Mayor, City Department. This is my second term, seven plus year on council. And in my day job, I, what we call the bin sale for the Health, Safety, Work, Life Service Center, which is part of U.S. Coast Guard. There I oversee the medical budget for 42 Coast Guard clinics.
My name is Nathan Clark, and I'm only in the seventh month. I was elected when Lisa was, last November. So I'm still learning as it goes, enjoying my time here. What I do currently is a career, I work for the Virginia Marine Resource Commission as a police officer, and I've been in that field for 29 years.
And I'll ask our appointees to identify themselves, too.
My name is Solomon Ashby. I'm the City Attorney for the City of Portsmouth.
I'm Bill Patton, City Manager, City of Portsmouth.
And behind you is our City Clerk. She keeps council straight. And Chairman Youngblood.
Thank you, sir. Mr. G., you want to start?
Sure. Ocasio-G, second year on the Planning Commission. I am a marketer by trade out of a small PR and marketing agency, and I work full-time for Liberty Tax Corporation as a digital marketing manager.
Sherri Thaxton. This, I was just appointed a couple of weeks ago, so I'm excited to be here. My day job, I'm a realtor with a local real estate company.
I'm David. My name's Janelle Hoffler. I was recently appointed to the Planning Commission back in February. My day job, I am a current staffer for our delegate Matthew James, because of the AD District.
My name is Preston Vaughn. This is my second year on the Planning Commission. My day job is, and then my day job isn't. I'm the president of my civic league. I'm on the foundation for the City Library, and Portsmouth City Library. And of course, I'm on the commission. But basically, I'm retired.
I'm Peter Youngblood. I'm, I guess this is my third year on planning, and I don't have a day job. I'm a retired Army Officer. I'm proud to be retired. Gives me time to do this sort of stuff.
Once again, I want to thank all of you introducing yourselves. I look forward to working with you. Look forward to, as a team collectively, we're doing great things to continue to move the vision that you have for the City of Portsmouth along. And we look forward to being on, on that bandwagon, working with you to do the development that you want to do within the City of Portsmouth. And my day job is running the Housing Authority.
Well, again, welcome to Portsmouth. If we can help you in any way, don't hesitate to call any of us.
Since you said that, I'm sure we'll be coming to you for a lot of help.
And tonight's meeting is a joint meeting, as I said in my introduction, between the City Council and Planning Commission. We're working to develop a new zoning ordinance. And so, this is a progress meeting in which the City Manager is going to solicit suggestions and consensus from us on a couple of issues. And you're welcome to stay.
Okay, I will. I'll stay for a while.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And with that, Dr. Patton.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. During the City Council's February retreat, one of your big things is to blow up the code, literally using your words. Well, for the last five months, the Planning Department's team, led by Mr. Bob Baldwin, immediately started the progress for several report backs to City Council to include parking, signs, and the D-2 form-based code. The process for zoning review, repeal, and replace is complex, involving individual property rights, mandated state code requirements, and the assessment of the city's comprehensive plan guidance. With the joint City Council and Planning Commission Public Work Session tonight, you will be briefed by the city's comprehensive plan consultants and planning director on three major planning and zoning topics. With our first presentation this evening, Mr. Bob Baldwin will provide a zoning ordinance update on the sign ordinance replacement project. Second, Ms. Emily Crowe from the consulting firm MDC, and Mrs. Delcino Miles of the Miles Group will provide an update on the city's comprehensive plan project entitled Build One Portsmouth. I must interject that Mr. Brian Swetz, our Planning Administrator, will begin the second presentation because Mrs. Crowe is enrobbed by car after a delay and then cancellation of her flight out of Washington, DC. She's probably right now about 40 minutes away. And she wants to come into Norfolk, but she's traveling by car. But we won't stop. We have good staff that will fill in and will go forward. Finally, Mrs. Crowe will also provide a briefing on the D-2 land use plan project, which is being prepared as a component of the comprehensive plan, and will also be used in the preparation of the replacement zoning for the D-2 form-based code. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, and the Planning Commission, as City Manager, I want to ensure that the city's Planning Department will follow the state code for developing and implementing zoning regulations. Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, members of the City Council, and our acting Planning Commission Chair for filling in, Mr. Youngblood. For those who aren't aware, our Vice Chair was going to be here tonight is having car trouble over in Norfolk and was unable to get here. Maybe she will, maybe she won't. I don't know if we've heard any updates for her, but she was not looking like she was going to make it over. So, and to other members of the Planning Commission, I'd just like to say a good evening. And we are going to jump in tonight on a topic we've talked about a little bit before briefly. It's on our sign regulations. And I'll give you a little bit more detail. We've made a lot of progress here working on that. And one other thing I would like to mention, since we're doing introductions in the back row back there, you see four gentlemen there with the Berkeley Group. That is our zoning ordinance consultants for the blowing up the zoning code and rewriting it. They're going to be with us all day tomorrow. But they're sitting in tonight, so they take an opportunity like, like others to get a, have a briefing on where we are with a lot of these other projects. So I'd just like to welcome them. Make sure you're aware they are in the room. And hopefully, as we go through this process, you'll start to recognize we do have a linkage that goes between our comprehensive plan, our zoning regulations, and how we do land use in the city. So if we've noted before, you know, the, the, one of the main driving forces out of rewriting our zoning code came out of a Supreme, U.S. Supreme Court case from 2015, the Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona case. I just want to point out, so that you can recognize that sign picture, that's the sign that actually started the, the Supreme Court case. It's a temporary, like a real estate type sign. In this case, the, we'll talk a little bit more about the way the sign regulations work, but this was a case where, under the Town's zoning code, signs of that nature for churches, and they had a specific thing for temporary signs for church uses, could only be put out 12 hours before the service for which it was advertising, and they had one hour to remove it afterwards. And this church did not have a permanent location. And so, as they would move from, from place to place, they put these directional signs out, these temporary directional signs out. And ultimately, that led to a challenge of the, of the Town's zoning regulator, actually the zoning enforcement against the church often worked its way all the way up to the U.S. Supreme Court, and pretty amazingly, had a completely impactful turn on the way sign regulations are done all across the country. This is a huge change, and it is still in play. There are other cases working their way through the courts. We'll probably see more of this as it goes on. But I want to start off with the number one most important thing here, is the first bullet up here, just point that out, that signs cannot be regulated based on content of the sign. If you have to read the sign to determine the regulate, you know, what regulations apply, it's probably unconstitutional. And so, that's a pretty, pretty critical thing. As we've noted in the second bullet, signs can only be regulated by the zoning district, if they're temporary or permanent. What type of sign is it, you know, freestanding or a wall sign? You know, size, the location, whether you're putting lighting on it. But when you get down to the uses being tied to it, or commercial versus non-commercial message, all of that has been declared off limits. Give you an example, some examples out of our current sign regulations. We have regulations refer to, you know, religious signs. We have regulations on institutional signs, educational signs. We have non-commercial signs. We've got construction signs. We've got real estate signs. All of these things being called out as specific things, all of those now declared unconstitutional. You are, you are content-based. And now, they're saying you can't do that. One other thing I just mentioned, historically in zoning regulations, there's been an understanding, difference between what we call commercial and non-commercial speech. Commercial speech, you know, Taco Bell sign, a Wendy's sign, commercial speech. Non-commercial speech, political sign, things of that nature. And the Supreme Court base said, we don't understand where this whole idea of a split between commercial and non-commercial speech has, has been, you know, evolved under the Constitution. We don't see it. And therefore, you know, places, and we do have, again, some of those references in our sign regulations, that you just can't separate that way. So that's a huge, huge impact to the way our sign regulations were, were crafted. So, in addition to compliance with the Supreme Court case, which is our, which is our number one issue, we had another, a number of other factors. Of course, this goes back to City Council's wanting us to have a more user-friendly type of sign regulations. We were, you know, running into some other issues. In particular, we have gaps in our sign regulations in the D-1 and D-2 districts that were creating a lot of problems, and we get different developments coming through, trying to figure out not only what, what regulations apply, but whether or not you actually had regulations that applied. So we're trying to fill in some of those gaps. Again, part of our zoning ordinance project, trying to consolidate all those multiple books into a single zoning code, consolidating this into a one place. We also had a situation where we've got multiple definitions for the same thing in different parts of the codes. We're trying to, you know, clarify all of that. So we, again, have something that's more user-friendly. Places, again, like the D-1 and D-2, where we don't have the necessary sign regulations in place, want to address that. And then making sure that what we do have in our code is, is Virginia State Code compliant. Okay, so now, back to the issues with the Reed case, a little bit more specifically. We want to ensure when we do our sign regulations that we have findings emphasize that our intent is not to violate people's free speech rights. That's the number one most important thing coming from the Supreme Court. Number two, we need to revise our definitions and eliminate references that are content-based. And obviously, if we're going to remove those definitions, we still need to regulate signs in some fashion. So you have to come up with a, an allowed way of regulating signs without falling back on the old practices. We need to go back through the signs in our code. We listed our, some are exempt, some require permits, some don't require permits. Depending on how those are written in the code, they step all over this question of being content-based, and so we have to go back through all of those. And then ultimately, back to that case of eliminating issues related to sign content. Okay, continuing on with issues on our sign regulations. And I just mentioned, we've been working on this for about four or five months. I think we've mentioned this before with the consulting firm of Clarion. And we have pretty much completed our work with them, so we're going back through again, re-establishing a framework for the new sign regulations. And these will be passed on, obviously, to our new zoning ordinance consultants as we, as we start to rebuild the code. We want to have a comprehensive list of sign definitions. We can consistently apply what we say to one person is what we say to someone else, what the definition is in one part of the city is the same somewhere else, what's in one district is the same somewhere else. We also have some common signage that's been developed over recent years, which our current code doesn't speak to, because you may not be aware that when the zoning ordinance was updated in 2010, the signs were not, they were done in 2009 as a separate process. And so, we do have some signs that are out there that the current code does not recognize or reference. Those wind sail signs, I'm sure you're all familiar with those feather signs, wind sail signs. Also, ones that have LED or MOO, you know, the changeable display. We have a number of places in town that have those kind of signs. They're just not referenced in our sign code at all. So we need to put some sort of standards in place for how those things are allowed and operated. We want maintenance provisions in there, you know, if your sign's falling apart, when can the city step in and require you to do maintenance on that? And again, we're going to have some tables and graphics, so it's clear, you know, what the requirements are, so people can more easily see what, what the regulations are that apply to them. Again, back to our D-1 and D-2. These are challenging sign districts for us, because you have a lot of very unique uses that are in there. For example, we have the amphitheater next door. We've got, you know, all sorts of buildings that aren't sort of standard. But we also have, and so we have cases where, in our current D-1 district, there's just a lot of gaps that need to be filled in. We have some issues in the D-2, again, has its own terminology. And then, again, trying to get, as we eliminate the form-based code, as Council's been directing us to do, to make sure that we also have whatever type of replacement signage we need that meets these unique circumstances for downtown. And then we want to talk a little bit about some of our procedural issues we have in our code. Again, I mentioned earlier, we have sections in our sign regulation where signs are exempt. Some are, are sort of exempt, but they need a permit, whatever. You can kind of make your own determination how that works in your, in your own mind. But we have a number of those kind of signs. We just want to get all that clear, so that when we're advising someone calling in about what their sign rights are, things they want to put out, that we're all speaking in the same, same vein. We also want to get into a situation, we get into when we're looking at site plans, buildings that have signs on them. When do you do the sign review? Do you do the sign review as part of the site plan? Is the sign review a separate thing? We do it kind of both ways right now. Sometimes that becomes more of an issue when trying to get a sign that meets the design standard of a building, and you didn't think about that before you did the site plan approval. And one other thing we'll mention, and we've talked before about, a thing that affected our Type 2 site plan process, is a Virginia Supreme Court case where the, they were clarifying the authority of a planning commission. In our current zoning code, we have a process, what they call a, an alternative signage plan. So if you wanted to do something above and beyond or different than what the current code is, let's say you're in a shopping center or a unique facility like the amphitheater, there was a process you could go through to request approval of separate planning. And that was all done through the authority of the Planning Commission. And we've had a number of those done. The Kroger Marketplace had one done. That facility over there had one done. That is no longer considered an allowed authority of the Planning Commission to do that. Planning Commission, under that case, was determined to be an advisory body, and they're not supposed to be taking final action on your zoning code. So we'll need to look for, because we do need a procedure such as that in place, so we'll be looking at an alternative, whether it's going to be a use permit. They'll go through City Council, perhaps if someone's getting a use permit, process it with the use permit, or going to be a special exception process, we'll go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. They have authority similar to City Council on use permits. We take that to the Board of Zoning Appeals. But whatever, whatever way we get to it, at the final, whatever Council's comfortable with, you do need a process for unique land use circumstance. And I just mentioned a few, the hospital, shopping center, entertainment venue. We need an ability to get above and beyond sort of the traditional sign regulations to make sure we have what we need in hand, so we don't block people. Again, one of our goals in all of these processes is to eliminate all these roadblocks we have that have been built into our code. So that's pretty much it. I'll just give you a little bit of an update on process where we are. As I mentioned, the work with Clarion has been completed as far as drafting the replacement sign regulations. One of the things we built into our process was to do a separate legal review because of the fact we're trying to comply as best we can with the Supreme Court case. And so, we're going to be doing a separate legal review with Sharon Pandax, a Virginia attorney, part of the consulting, she's actually part of our new consulting team as well. She'll be giving us a legal review. We'll take a look at that to see if we've missed anything, if we've made any, you know, major errors in that process that we need to address. As soon as we get the legal review done, we make any final tweaks, we will call that our draft that we'll work with. We'll post that online. We'll brief the Planning Commission, and we will start the public hearing process to amend the code, because we're going to go ahead and get the sign regulations done, just as we discussed a couple of weeks ago with the parking. And so, our goal will be, hopefully, to have new sign regulations through the process to the Planning Commission, hopefully as early as October. Could be November to Council in December. But it'll all depend on what the ultimate review is on our sign regulations. And one of the things we asked her to do was, there was a couple of areas in there where we thought there might be an error, or Council might be willing to take a little bit of a risk for something you might really want to do in terms of the sign code, and we want a risk assessment done. If we have, have anything in that sign ordinance that might be unclear, is how you might do in a, in a, in a case going to court. I just mentioned, something I mentioned at the Planning Commission at their recent meeting. There was a case that went to the Supreme Court recently, related to one of those unattended drop-off boxes for charitable donations, and the Supreme Court's determined that the language on those boxes is constitutionally protected. And so, there are a number of places that have gotten themselves tangled up under, under this Reed case with their drop-off boxes. So just to give you a note, there's a, there's a lot of change going on for us in our zoning regulations related to signs, and how sometimes signs relate to, to a thing. In that case, related to a not, in that case, you have boxes that are nonprofits. And so, we get back into that commercial, non-commercial speech and all of those things. So this is all new territory. We're working through it. We think we've got a good draft, a very good draft, and hopefully, we'll be back to, to City Council this, certainly before the end of the year, hopefully as early as November.
Last question.
None of these changes would have any effect on the fact that, of where you post a sign as far as city property. I mean, I, I spent the weekend looking at a lot of social media posts about a number of signs that were appearing at, like Alexander's Corner, you know, in the median, on city property.
Right.
Who cares what they say, they just look junky.
Right. Okay. So let me, let me cover that for you. As you know, and we've discussed before, the City of Portsmouth zoning line ends at the right-of-way. Okay, so when we do zoning regulation for signage, we're talking on, on property, not in the street right-of-way. Of course, street right-of-way typically starting behind the sidewalk through the street. So there's a median in there. That's not zoning regulated, that's just not permitted. All of those signs that are in the median, if they're not, if they're not a traffic control sign, so to speak, they generally are not allowed in. They're illegal signs.
Read back your house, whatever.
And the city picks those up. City picks those up. We will have some regulations we're looking at in terms of on public property. You know, we've, we've got some issues we have to look at in terms of, of, again, we have some certain facilities the city has that other people don't have, events the city has happened that others don't have, where you might need more ability to do different kinds of signs than normal. And that, that's, we get into that sort of gray area in terms of legal authority to do things. We're looking at that. So we would mention, when we have a festival, say you have a seawall art festival, what's the city's authority to put up signs for that compared to normal? What, one of the things that happens in here, I'll just give you a couple comparisons. If you look at a typical political sign, and you look at a typical real estate sign, and the way most localities would regulate that, like in a real estate sign, you can leave it up until you sell your house or rent your house. People leave those things up years. Same kind of sign, if it's for a political candidate, we have a 90 days beforehand, you know? And the Supreme Court says, you can't do that. See, that's the kind of stuff that you can't, you can't distinguish.
Because you can't read the sign.
The sign is the sign. If you have to read the sign, notice you can't do that. So we have to go back and go, how comfortable are you going to be? How broad are you going to be willing to have these signs sit? And how do you get around some of these things? And we have a number, I mentioned, construction signs. I mean, we built the, when Harbor Vista was built across the street, think about the kind of signs that go up for a project like that, whether it's a, who am I, who's financing the building, and who's building it, and, you know, when, when it's for lease, and when's the grando, all those things, banners and all of those things. And if you can't read those to say, we're only going to allow that because it's for rent, that becomes a lot more complicated when the guy next door says, I'd like to put the same kind of sign up. I'm not having any event like that. But, you know, under the Supreme Court ruling, you really can't distinguish. So it's, that's the kind of thing that makes it a challenge. So we're, we're working through a lot of those details. And I just mentioned, as we've been advised, there's a number of cases going through the court system right now that might provide some clarity on some of these issues. I'll give you one last example, that off-premises signs. One of those we typically don't allow. You know, you can't, McDonald's can't advertise on someone else's property. You know, that would be considered an off-premises sign. But of course, to know that they're doing that, you have to read the sign.
Have to read the sign.
You know, so it gets kind of complicated. So, you know, this is all new to us. A lot of localities are doing it in different ways. A lot of places have different thresholds of risk they're willing to take in doing it. We're trying to start off with, with something that is as compliant as we can create. And then the last thing we just mentioned, because we're going to be doing the zoning ordinance project, we'll have another shot at this. As we go back through the whole, the whole zoning code, through that process, one more opportunity to revise the sign regulations.
Bill Scotty, question.
Bob, how about our ability to regulate signage that most people would deem offensive?
Yeah, same, that's exactly where you have a problem. When you get into free speech issues, there are some cases where I'm sure the City Attorney could, could have an opinion when those things are just not allowed. But generally speaking, offensive speech, or what we call personal political speech, all that stuff is what's protected by the Constitution. We would have zero ability to, to regulate that type of, that type, that's exactly what they don't want you regulating, you know?
Unless it's on public.
Unless it's on public property. And that's why we'll, we'll have a very restrictive policy to be advertising, putting it on city property, so we, we don't get caught in, in those things. But that's a really good question. This political question is one that's come up, I'll use that as an example. And you think about this for a second. We have a requirement, says you can have your political signs up 90 days before, well, if you went through a process of, of, let's say, a primary, somebody's going through a primary, they might need their signs up much longer. much longer. We might be telling you to take it down, that would be an absolute no-no, to be telling political candidates, your signs have to come down, it's been up too long, even though you're in the middle of a, of a process. We've seen some things that have happened when people have caught up in cases like Takings cases, where somebody's complaining about the government's overreach, or whatever, and they want to put a sign up like that, and that court case might drag on for, you know, a year, two years. How long can they leave their protesting sign out there? So all of that is what's really protected. That's the stuff that we've always recognized would be protected under the Constitution. Now really, you're getting this question where the, the commercial signs are also going to be treated a similar level of, of protection, and so you can't really distinguish the way we have in the past.
Lisa.
Are there any fines or citations or punitive stipulations that are associated with people who violate or?
Yes, yeah. Nor, it depends what the sign is. You know, normally our, our response is we, you know, it's, it's a typical zoning violation. We send them a notice, and generally speaking, the violation of it's a portable sign type, they just get it abated, they take it down. They don't take it down, you know, a lot, depending where it is, if it's in the right-of-way, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll take it down. But yeah, there are typical, you have to go through the legal process, but there are fines or other measures that the courts can impose for, for signs, just like any other provision of the, of the zoning code.
Mr. President.
So I've become intimately knowledgeable of this court case, working in retail nationwide for a franchisor. Have we, how have we defined signage in this case, and does it include sign spinners and human signs?
Yeah, we've got, and we'll, we'll provide, as we get a little further on, we have a whole lot of new categories. We've gotten into inflatable, those inflatable man signs, we've got, you know, a whole number of these things with movement that haven't been regulated before, and all of that, you know, that's what we're trying to define, what you call those things. And every time you turn around, somebody has some other variation, you're going to see a lot of questions that come up about flags, about balloons, about all of those kind of things that, you know, and, and one that's been real, real challenge is, is it used to be simple in our code, separating art from signs, murals, advertising murals, you know, when are you assigned, when are you not, if you can't, you know, read the specific language on it. And that's not nearly as simple as you think. We normally used to say if it's not a commercial message, it's not a commercial sign, it's, you know, regulate a certain way, but that's not necessarily going to be the way it's looked at going forward. So we are looking at some of those issues as well, because we've got a very broad provision to allow, you know, art, murals enforcement.
Bill.
How about the portable signs that you see every once in a while, that, you know, go down the road and the message can change, it's pulled like a trailer?
Yeah, things.
Or a truck.
Generally speaking, things that are on wheels and moving, we don't, we don't get into regulating. They're impossible to enforce. We, we had a lot of discussion about people who take trucks and park them in certain places, but you also recognize every business has their name on their truck, and so, you know, when do you separate the sign violation from, so we're trying to, we're trying to be, also to, to recognize our community and how, how many local businesses we have that advertise that way and not be overly punitive. But we are, we did look at all of those, all those things, anything that moves, we've looked at all those things. And I will just tell you that I don't think we'll have it perfect first go, go around, but we keep working, we may never get it perfect, obviously, but we keep working at it till it, for, for as great as extent as possible, will work for us.
Bill Scotty question.
Mayor, I was just, as Mr. Baldwin indicated, that signs that are in the median are against the law. Is that, that's what our code says?
That's correct.
Which means that any sign that's in the median, our team of inspectors on Saturday morning can pick up every sign and discard it at our compound.
That's correct. And we also have provisions in there, if the city manager declares certain signs in there to be a safety hazard, you get the same kind of, have to be careful, some of these directional signs, and, you know, direct the people certain places, but.
But when we, when I, what I'm speaking of is on Saturday mornings, mostly on Saturday mornings, you have your realtors who are throughout the city, in communities where there may be a house that's on sale, and they put their sign in the median. And I think that the, the determination has to be made, are we, are we saying, is, is council saying that every sign, we get a brigade that we see in a median in Portsmouth, is picked up and discarded at the compound? I'm just.
What was the reaction?
Even temporary?
Yeah. They're all temporary.
Yeah, they're all temporary.
They're all temporary. And I'll just.
I think it's, I'm just throwing out something to think about, I'm not saying tonight, we're going to be coming back and discussing signage.
The basis for this is that typically when you're in the public right-of-way, you have to have a permit.
That's correct.
And these signs do not have a permit.
Right.
And so it doesn't make any difference, their size, nor their color, nor the message. The fact that they're a non-permitted sign means that they're subject to being removed.
And that's why I mentioned our zoning code stops at the line, you move into chapter 32, which is the streets and sidewalks section of city code, and they're prohibited. They're considered a safety hazard, just going into it, having to, and also people getting in and out of their cars, walking through traffic, to put signs out there is considered an unsafe practice as well.
To me, for the most part, even when realtors have open houses and, I mean, we've got one sitting here, but they don't put them in the middle of a median.
Yeah.
They're over here with a balloon and a thing that goes that way.
Right.
For, for two hours.
I've noticed on High Street, on our median on High Street, on Saturday mornings, there is some realtor who puts it right where our lights are. That's the median.
Well, it shouldn't be there.
The, yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's like, it's not your regular paper sign, it's a little more expensive sign. But that's something, Mayor, that at some point.
Everybody understand the, the question?
Yeah.
And the issue?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's not changing, that's the way it's always been. They've been in violation, they're currently in violation, we need to remove it.
Don't allow people to stand in the median either.
Yeah.
The follow-up on Bill's question about signs on wheels, sign trucks per se, that have a complete billboard side are not regulated by the city of Portsmouth.
If they're, if they're in motion, as he's described, as if you're driving down the street, that's not regulated, certainly not under zoning code. If you were to park it and turn that into a permanent, like a fixed position sign, we do have regulations we're proposing for what we'll call portable signs. You know the ones that, historically, you said the ones you'd pull behind, have arrows and messages on it, that, that is regulated. Once it's up on private, private's in a driveway, it's in a parking lot, but in the street, if it's moving down the street, it's not regulated. We, you know, you don't even have an address to, to cite them for being in violation while they're moving, so.
In your presentation, you talked about signs that may not need a permit.
Mm-hmm.
Like a sign affixed to a building? Can you elaborate on?
Well, we have a, have a number of basics. Some of you have an example, an address sign, you know, or you wouldn't, if you're going to put an address of your house, that's a sign. I mean, if you look at the regulations, there's a number of things that we would be, that are technically considered a sign, and they would not need a permit. Some can be pretty small, you know, and then, and then some of those, for example, on temporary signs, we just allow, you can just go at them, as long as you do that in accordance with the code, you don't need to come and actually get a permit, you just have to follow what the code requirements are. So we have a, you know, a number of those kind of signs that would be, you know, let's say you're having a yard sale, you don't necessarily need to have a, come in and get a zoning clearance for the sign to be out there for the day you're having your yard sale. We're trying to have those kind of signs, would be, follow the code, put the, put the sign out there, get rid of it, whatever you're doing. But again, the tricky part now with the language on these things is, you know, we can't call it a yard sale sign. So, you know, the Supreme Court case has made a lot of those things which were convenient, from a regulatory standpoint, complicated. Not necessarily at anyone's advantage, I mean, I think the intent for constitutional clarity is always a good one, but from a regulatory standpoint, when people have always said, well, my church can have a certain kind of a sign, and now we can't have a separate category for church signs. And they've always had kind of a unique, as you know, churches typically have their own unique kind of sign provisions as well. So that, that kind of an idea, where you get special regulations for church signs will have to go away. So we'll have to have, you know, sign regulation would encompass whatever it is people are trying to do in a, the broadest, in sort of the broadest sense.
Is there any such thing as a grandfathered sign now?
Um, that's a, that's a very good question. You know, vested rights, if you have signs out there, we'll probably have some of that. We'll probably have some of that, you know? We're mostly going to be regulating, I think, under this case moving forward. It does apply, I think there have been some questions raised about similar to this case here, if you try to enforce your sign regulations, and you end up, like, if we were to take our current sign regulations and try to enforce that, you can, you can find yourself in violation of the Supreme Court case decision. But I think, you know, the, the idea of, you know, vested rights, we do have, we do have those. We also have some provisions in the Virginia State Code that limit our ability to make people take signs down. There's a two-year provision in the state code for that. So you might get a little bit tangled up between the state code provisions and the U.S. Supreme Court case on that. But I'm sure we'll have plenty of vested signs, certainly if you change sign heights, change, you know, those kind of things, lighting provisions, you will get vested sign, you'll get vested signs out of that, grandfathered signs out of that.
Members of city council and the Planning Commission, any other questions or comments on this particular subject? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Swet. Thank you.
Sorry?
It's okay.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Brian Swetts. I am a planning administrator in the planning department. I'm the project manager for the update of the city's comprehensive plan, which we're calling Build One Portsmouth. So I'm here tonight to tell you a little about, to remind you what we've done, to tell you about where we are right now, to describe where we're going to be going in the future, and then also to try to get input from you all on some things that we're working on currently. I would, I don't need to tell you this, but if you have questions, please feel free to, to interrupt me during the presentation. I'd like to be able to tailor this to what you all are most interested in, so don't feel like you have to wait till the end. If you have something, please go ahead and let me know. So we have a large and specialized team that we're working with to try to cover as many aspects that we can, and get the best people that we can find to help us with that. One of those people is here tonight, Delcino Miles with the Miles Agency. She's helping us with our outreach and communications. Delcino, if you want to raise your hand, let everyone know. Delcino's also local, she's out, she works out in Virginia Beach, so it's good to have someone local who kind of understands the city working on their team, since we're bringing so many people in from around the country. So this is a two-year process, we are about halfway through. We started last August, we are aiming to finish next June, that's when we want to, we're trying to have final adoption of the plan. We are in phase three, which is the framework for the plan, where we're coming up with an outline before we start filling in, filling in the gaps with narrative. The small, the circles here refer to public outreach efforts that we've made. We had our Focus on the Future workshop in November, had a vision workshop in February, and we're going to be having our next big event in September. I want to talk to you a little bit about what happened at those events, but before I do that, I would like to bring Delcino up, so she can tell you about what we've been doing to try to get Portsmouth citizens as involved as we possibly can. Delcino?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kind of weak, but we'll work with it, all right? I'm with the Miles Agency, and it's been, it's been a joy to do this project. People love this city, and we learned that from the various surveys that we, that we had. We've reached over 20,000 people. You've had me at dancing, online dancing in the street, and I was freezing at the Riverfest, I was at the car show, I know more about cars than I ever did. We've been at flea markets, and who was there that had some LPs, the old vinyl, so I, I, you've gotten some of my money here in your, in your budget. So we've had party in the street, we've had Riverfest, we've had flea markets, we've gone to civic leagues, we've had onsite and online surveys, and over 250 people filled out those surveys. We've had public meetings, as Brian mentioned, interactive workshops, many of you attended those. We've had our, we've had our iCandy or Brian on TV shows, we've had him on radio shows, we've had the original BB, you know BB King, but Bob Baldwin, we've had him too at these shops. We've, we've, we have a website as well, so you can go to that and get updates on what's going on. We've had email blasts, courtesy of Mr. Pace, and he's, he has an extensive list of various citizen groups, and we sent it out that way. We've had an outreach team that's been working with us, that's a cross-section of various stakeholders and opinion leaders throughout the city. They've been from the military, business owners, civic leaders, faith-based, public schools, the medical facilities, Bon Secours, so, and we've had NAACP, TCC, and various others, all involved. So it's been very robust, very interactive, and we feel that we haven't left any stone unturned. Everyone's had an opportunity, and if you're worried about those who may not have access to the internet, we had, we had things set up in the libraries where people could access online in the, in your, in your public library, so utilizing the tools that you've already provided them. So we didn't overlook anyone, and we provided access for those with, with internet and without internet that do line dancing, love cars, we've been all over the place. So I've really gotten to know the city, but the one thing, the takeaway for me is, people love Portsmouth. And so that's, that's what you find out, that's the anecdotal comment I'd like to share with you. Many of them feel that this is a wonderful jewel, that's why they chose to live here, do business here, raise their families here. So you all should be very encouraged that the people that were willing to give us input were very forthright. And so it's, forget about what you read in the paper, if there's intermediate here, yeah, we, we're not worried about what's in the paper, it's the people that call Portsmouth home that we paid attention to. And those are the comments that we took seriously, and that's the result of what Brian is going to share with you. So it's been a privilege to, and we're going to continue that, and Brian's going to share next steps in terms of continuing that dialogue with the public.
Any questions? Anybody?
It's really hard to follow someone who does PR for a living. Delcino mentioned being on radio, and so I would like to, it takes the opportunity to publicly thank Councilwoman Lucas Burke, who joined us on Barbara Hamley's show, Another View. She was nice enough, she gave us an entire hour to not just talk about the comp plan, but to talk about Portsmouth. And so, thank you, Councilwoman, for agreeing to do that, you're a great saleswoman for the city. So as I mentioned, we've had two workshops so far. The first one was our Focus on the Future workshop. This is where we went out to talk to people, to find out, what is it that you love about Portsmouth? What do you think are our greatest opportunities? And then we looked at specifically, what areas of the city do you think that we should be prioritizing? And like Delcino said, we had over 250 people participate, both in person and online, we had over 1,800 unique comments during that outreach, that outreach effort. We took the information that we got from the Focus on the Future workshops, and we categorized it, and we turned it into our vision workshop, where we wanted to get the public to help us come up with guiding principles for the plan, and vision statements for the plan. After, concurrently with the outreach efforts, MDC and other subcontracting members of the team, we're doing two big projects. The first was looking at trends and forces that are currently affecting the city and that we project will be affecting the city in the future during, during the life of the plan. A lot of that is looking at things like demographic information, but it's also looking at things like our, our infrastructure, you know, or our school systems. We were looking at the current plan, what has gone well with the plan, and we were surveying our citizens to find out about community values and priorities. And again, all this can be found on the plan's website, buildoneportsmith.org. We were also doing an assessment of current city plans, including the comprehensive plan. So we wanted to find out, what are we doing that we can integrate into the comp plan, instead of just trying to make up new things as we go along, where we might be duplicating efforts or missing things? And so part of that was interviewing all the different departments to find out, how are you using the comp plan currently? How can we get you using it more in the future? How can we integrate the good work that you're doing into the city's comprehensive plan? Using that, the various team members created a couple of memos telling us where we are in terms of land use, our environmental impacts, transportation mobility, and economic assessments, including a market analysis. Those also are all on the website, if you're curious to read what we're looking at, what our conditions are in the city. So this is where I would like to start trying to get some input from you all. First, we want to look at the guiding principles that we came up with for the plan. We have four, very alliterative, our pride, our people, our places, and our position. What we did was, we worked as a team to come up with examples of guiding principle statements, and we brought them out to the public, and we asked people to vote on them. We took their voting and their input and did a second draft, and this is where we are now. This is what we'll be bringing back to the public in September to make sure that they're okay with it. But before we do that, we would like to bring it to you all and see, are you okay with it? These came directly out of, like I said, the information that we got about what people said that they loved about the city. We took those comments and distilled it down into these four statements. So I'd like to ask you, do, is there anything here that you find objectionable? Do you think that these are statements that do act quickly, thank you, accurately reflect what, what you know, your friends, your neighbors, your, your fellow church members that they think about the city? Is there anything here that we can add or subtract? If you have any comments, I'm happy to, to listen to, or if you have any questions about where the statements came from, I can try to help with that as well. Or if not, we can move on.
Councilman, what do you?
In fact, my first take on them, they're, they're very good. I would suggest that our position, our position within Hampton Roads, I think people have that Portsmouth and its position, and Hampton Roads might ask the question, what is that position? So you might want to define that, our, our central position, whatever Portsmouth needs to be done, I think I should redefine.
Okay.
I would switch the order slightly.
Okay.
It starts, the first two are the strongest two and most emotional, and then it goes to more of technical. So I think if you close with pride or people, it kind of brings it full circle.
Okay.
I haven't seen these.
Like that.
Other comments?
I think, Mayor, that we should let these items be in your executive brief, a document, so you can actually look at, study and make some determination. You won't be able to do, you know, to look at it tonight, but you will have time, but we'll provide it to you in your next executive brief for your review and comments.
Great. I mean, at first glance, it is really nice.
Yeah, yeah. It is.
And it's, and it's what you think.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you know, we got great feedback on this, and, and the response to these statements was overwhelmingly positive. Most people, I think, something like 80% of people said that they were perfectly happy with these. And Councilman, you, you mentioned the position. I hadn't really ever thought about that. I was surprised that that was actually one of the most common statements that we got from people during our outreach, that they actually loved the geographic locations of the city. I hadn't really ever stopped to think about that, but that was a really, really common comment.
Brian, I think that you just hit upon the key there. It's not, not our position so much as our location, our geographic location.
Yeah.
We didn't do that on purpose. It just kind of worked out that way.
Gateway. Can you work that in? Our position, we're a gateway community, gateway to Hampton Roads, the Commonwealth to the nation.
Absolutely.
I think it's, I think it's kind of interesting that this was done by talking to a lot of citizens all over the place and coming up with this, and it's very similar to the vision that we came up with at our retreat.
That's what I was getting ready to say.
I like how it's, you know, so there, you know, the thoughts, you know, our thoughts are the same as the community, which is great.
Yes, and to be able to align our plan with what it, what it is that you all are thinking obviously helps too. Okay, so these were the four guiding principles, and then what follows from that is the vision statement. And so, again, we gave people four different options. People were a little bit more split in trying to come up with the vision statement. As you know, when you all went through this exercise, you know, you're working with seven of you. Can you imagine doing this with a couple hundred people? It's, it's an interesting process, but one of the things that we got in our feedback was that people liked having, you know, big, strong action words highlighted at the beginning. So these ideas of thriving, resiliency, evolving, and equity are equitable in the statement here. These are the four main vision statements that we, that we've come up with. And again, you know, per Dr. Penn, we will get this to you and provide opportunities for feedback, but I wanted to introduce this to you, and if anyone has any thoughts at first glance, again, I'm happy to, to take any comments or any feedback on these statements.
I think we're ready.
Okay. So the way that we are going to structure the plan, which is what we're focusing on in Phase Three of the project, is to take these vision statements, and each one of those is going to be almost like a chapter within the plan. So if you think about our current comprehensive plan and what most comprehensive plans have tended to do in the past, your chapters are kind of broken up by the responsibility of different state department. So you might have a chapter on education, and a chapter on infrastructure, or a chapter on public utilities. We said we want to do something different. We want to make this more of an ideas-based comprehensive plan. So we're going to be building our goals and our strategies and our actions directly from the vision statement. So we make sure that we tie all these ideas together and that we give this plan a sense that we're working towards a larger goal and not just coming up with a to-do list for city staff members. One of the things we would also like to do, and I think at this point, I'm going to ask Emily to come up, because she has come in. Emily Crowe is our, our, the plan manager with McBride, Dale, Clarence. We want to introduce a geographic component to the plan. One of the things that we always get as staff, we get phone calls from citizens and say, hey, can you tell me what's going on in my neighborhood? And so by creating a plan that, that is geographic-based, and that will be online in a format that's much more dynamic than just a printed document, we're going to give people the opportunity to be able to go directly to their neighborhood or their, you know, larger area and say, hey, what's happening here? I would like to know. And I will turn it over to Emily at this point, so that she can talk a little bit more about that.
Hello, everyone. Sorry for my tardy arrival.
It's okay.
Welcome. So Brian gave me a really good introduction here in terms of the geographic framework. The, the two major components that we are looking at with the geography is the areas that the city has, and the citizens have said, we think we might need to do something special in these areas. And that's the map that you see up here. This is a combination of the research we've done to identify potentially redevelopable areas, as well as areas where people have talked about maybe changing things up a little bit, or just see a keen opportunity for some, some focus in the future. And so those tie in very strongly with your economic development motives and the goals. When we talk about being a thriving community, these are the geographies that we need to look at to think about, how are we going to be a thriving community in the future? We also have systems, like your environmental systems, your, your waterways and your green land cover, the things that aren't built but provide an essential function here in the city. And then you have your transportation and mobility functions as well. They all serve as a framework for the decisions you have to make as a community about the future. And that's what the comprehensive plan is intended to do, is to provide that guidance at a very high, broad level, so that when you have to make decisions about how to move forward with something in the city, you've got a good understanding and a framework on which to build those decisions.
Can you please explain the color code and the legend?
Yes, yes. And this is, this is kind of a working map at this point. The darker blue areas on this map are just kind of general areas that were identified through the number, I think we had about three or four rounds of where are the strong places and where are the places where we need some attention. We did this with Planning Commission. We did it, I believe, possibly with council at one point. And then we also did this, we did two iterations of it with the public. In the first round, it was just kind of an open identification, and then in the second round, we actually had people give us strategies and ideas about what they thought should happen there. The red, and if I can use, so the red color that says vacancy, yes, those are the areas that we actually were able to identify as land that is unbuilt, does not currently have structures on it, other than possibly parking. And then the underutilized, which is kind of this coral pink color, that is the land that, when we did a analysis of all the properties in the city, those have a building value that is less than half of the land value underneath it, which indicates that there's some potential for redevelopment on those sites that would have a higher yield for the city. And so what we did is we overlaid all those areas that people talked about wanting to see efforts put into with those vacant and underutilized parcels, and you can see a lot of consistency with that.
So what you're saying is that the underutilized color is driven by data, not by opinion?
Correct. Correct. So the blue was driven by opinion, the red and the pink were data-driven. And so those focus areas are going to be really important, and we'll see those again as we move forward and we start talking about strategies. But, you know, everybody has a concept of a comprehensive plan, and there's always a map with it. And so what does that map look like for Portsmouth moving forward? Well, one of the things that we've heard a lot about is that there is a desire for maintaining and, and enhancing the community character. You have a lot of unique, interesting neighborhoods, and they're not all the same. They don't look the same. They don't function the same. They're not the same layout. You don't have the same kind of houses in every neighborhood. So what we did is we looked at the development pattern of the city, the way it is today. And this is a great guide as you move forward in thinking about zoning and changes with your zoning, which I know you're all considering right now. But this focuses on what is here today? What do we want to protect and preserve about the character of our community? And then we also highlight things like your major business districts. And so we have on here neighborhoods of different types, and that's driven by when, the era in which those neighborhoods were developed. And then we have the framework, the transportation framework on here, where you have your major regional connections, your transit lines, the existing transit system that's here. And then we also have on here proposed bike routes, because we want to think about, how do we move throughout the community? And then we also have on here, which is really important for this community in particular, we've also looked at the areas that are impacted by flooding. And so on top of what we know, kind of how you're built, we also want to look at the areas that are influenced or likely to be impacted by flooding. And so those are those lighter areas on here, and you can see, obviously, and as you all know, a significant portion of the city is impacted by that. And we also started to identify some preliminary gateways, and we have, you know, kind of the uptown area, the midtown area, obviously the waterfront in downtown. Sometimes we looked at interchanges like Cedar Lane up here in the Churchland area. But this is something that we want to continue developing with the community through the next strategies, because those gateways into the community are kind of your front door. And, you know, what are the strategies that we can use in those places in particular to kind of further the vision? So we put this all out here. This is the framework basis that we are kind of working from at this point, and that kind of takes us now to the next steps, which actually, and Brian, I think, shares my sentiment on this, we're getting into the really exciting part of the planning process. So everybody's come out, and we've had great participation to date, and we've heard a lot of ideas about what we want to have happen in Portsmouth. But what's coming up is an opportunity to actually say what can be done. So we're moving towards initiatives, programs, policies, and ideas about how does this community think we can achieve this vision? So to get to that point, we are doing kind of our homework as the planners to put that together for the community. We have plans to take kind of best practices, technical implementation tools. We'll be putting those together so that they're digestible and readable by the public. But we also want to give the community an opportunity. What are their ideas about how this happens? And so we're going to be starting to ramp up and really try to make this an exciting opportunity for the community, and really push promotionally, you know, what's going to be happening in September. And I believe, Brian, I don't know if we have the date on here specifically.
September 30th.
September 30th, which is a Saturday. And we're doing that because we feel like there's a lot to cover, and we want to give people the time to process this and really engage and understand the information that's out there, and, and, you know, think through the answers that they want to give us, and have, have time to talk to their neighbors. So we think that's really important. Delcino Miles is here, and she's, she's been helping us to get the word out. So we're really excited about this, and we're putting together the campaign to promote this, because we really would like to get the numbers back up, if we can, to the numbers that we had in the first round of engagement. And it's always a challenge for communities, because, you know, participants have busy lives, and they have other things they need to do, but we're going to do our best. We're going to do some personal outreach to the, the people who have come and have shown interest, and we're going to continue reaching out to the groups that we haven't heard enough from. So once we do this third round of public engagement, what we are really going to do is put our heads down and start to draft the plan and put this together. And Brian and I are working on ideas for like, what this will look like, how it will be interactive, so that people feel like they don't have to read through a, you know, 200-page document to figure out what you're going to do about the issue that they are concerned about. So we're working really diligently to make this an engaging and very user-friendly document for the city. And we anticipate having drafts of elements kind of throughout the fall and winter, and then by February, we would hope to have kind of a full public review draft. That's when the plan would go to, you know, we would publish it online and put copies in the library and make sure it's all over, and then really publicize that it's out there, leave a nice window of opportunity for people to engage on that. And then we would kind of cap that process with an open house, where they can come and talk to us. Also during that period, the plan will go out to VDOT for their review, which is required. And so that will be kind of early winter 2018, and then we would hope that that gives you all the security that you feel like we've had good input, it's been well-vetted, and then bring that back to you for the formal adoption process through Planning Commission and Council.
This question may be premature, and I preface it with this statement slash question. First, all localities are required to have a comprehensive plan. The requirement is that they be updated every five years. The question that may be premature, what is the, what's changing in this plan from our previous plan? What's the biggest surprise?
Well, I don't know that I can say, I can't tell you right now what the biggest change is, but what we have done is we have created a matrix of all the goals and policies and strategies from the existing comprehensive plan. And over the next couple of months, Brian and I will be working to make sure that if it's still a relevant policy, that it finds a home in this new document. Probably the biggest change is going to be that this one was so widely crowdsourced, basically. So it's a refreshing of the vision, that we can say, you know, we've affirmed this vision with the community, and it may be very consistent with the existing vision, but we at least know that this is affirmed. And then the, the secondary thing that would probably, the biggest change is going to be the structure of the plan, that we're going with the thematic structure over the topical elements. But again, we're doing that all in hopes of making this a more accessible document and something that the community embraces.
Questions, comments?
Just a comment, Mayor. One of the things that I notice, and as Mrs. Crowe indicated, in the onset of us starting in 2016, there has been more engagement of citizens in, in this process than any that I have seen prior to the last one and years, years ago. And I think it's because we had so much broad outreach. I mean, the, the sessions were full, there were different people, and I think, as all of the citizens have known, you all were away now for the month doing what you needed to do, and they're already aware, come fall, we are able to get back in and get engaged. And I think, I think we're going to have a plan that the citizens have really been engaged and expressed, and will come through of this is what they would like to see.
Dr. Peddman would like to add, to bring attention to the Facebook Live. That's a new element that we're bringing to this, this next round. For those who cannot attend, or for whatever reason life takes over, they can have a chance to, they won't miss a thing. So they can't physically come to these workshops, they can engage online through Facebook Live, and where we can address their questions in real time. So I wanted to bring attention to that, that we're adding that element to this round, and we'll work very closely with- and we'll work very closely with your marketing department to make that happen. You already have these tools, we're just putting them to use.
And additionally, we've had, in every previous round, we've had an online element. And so the online, there's, if someone can't come to the event, there's a place online where they can answer the questions and provide feedback.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this segment? Thank you.
All right. Now we will move into the D2 form base.
And before we do that, let's take a two-minute stretch. Two minutes. And then we'll...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to do what you did. Let's give a little, so Brian, to the show, to take a new tour. It was a lot against this one, so you go, you love the place. Sorry about your flight. It's a multi-restaurant, riding down 3rd.
Thank you.
Years and years and years.
We can hear Ben's voice.
We're living in, and I was flying back, flying out of Oregon, it's hell.
Finally got into New Jersey. We can't look for a flight back.
His team looks at...
We're going to redirect you.
I need a little bit more than that. We got a...
I'm going to Paris by connecting flights. I present...
I'm not going to tell him, it's Paris by myself. I don't know my way, I don't have, not that covered, getting air, anywhere, just missing my flight, and my flight.
Did you sue that?
I was in Paris back.
So I will...
I don't know if this is going to be...
I don't know if this is going to be...
Everyone else is Paris, like, they have, like, weird episodes.
I put it together.
Oh, Lord, that was short.
We are...
If I didn't know, we're going to be so close to each other, I don't know if I would have wanted to go.
I knew I'd anger this, this is why I jipped the pie here.
Thank you, Mr. May.
That was all the...
Come back order, please. Come back, come back order.
All right, Dr.?
Yes, sir. I was going to say, bye, Tom, new executive director.
Please.
The D2 district area land use study will be presented by Mrs. Crow.
Thank you.
Thank you all. So I'm not sure how much background you got at the beginning of the meeting, but in addition to working on the comprehensive plan, we also started a special area project for the uptown D2 area in about January of this year. And so it was a short timeframe on this project, and it was a special request to help you all understand a little bit better about what the existing development and market are doing in this area, so that there can be adjustments made to the zoning regulations for this area. And this was in particular response to the D2 district as it was written and adopted. And so we, we took about three months to do the front-end process. We did a lot of background research. We did three rounds of public engagement, including some stakeholder interviews, and then two work sessions to kind of have people respond to the process and the plan in development. And then we prepared the final study and the recommendations, so it's kind of a combination land use study and plan. And those, kind of the final draft for consideration was completed at the end of June. And so we, we have completed the work process at this point, and this is now just a document for reference and consideration. The big thing that I was aware of as we went into this process is that the D2 zoning regulations were written as a mixed-use district that was very urban. And by saying very urban, we're talking about multi-story buildings with ground-level commercial and office, and apartments and offices above that, at a very high density, and that's what it was intended to be. But if you drive around the current D2 area, which is between Virginia Avenue and about Effingham from the east to west, and London Boulevard is kind of our northern corridor, and County Road is the southern corridor, and then you have the Martin Luther King Freeway extension. So this is a neighborhood in an area that was impacted by that highway extension and project that just was completed last November. And so the, the feedback we were getting was that there were a lot of people that wanted to do things in this area that would bring economic development, but they couldn't because the current zoning was not allowing that to happen. And so what I did is, I thought, you know, instead of looking at this just as a district in the city of Portsmouth, let's look at this as what is this district's role in the city of Portsmouth? And if you zoom way out on this, you notice that the D2 district is really kind of a conjoining of a bunch of your, a bunch of different development styles. It's not a mixed-use vertical like your downtown. It has some of that along High Street, that makes a lot of sense. But you have kind of an extension of the neighborhood here. So you had the Cottage, I believe it's Cottage Place neighborhood that was here, and it really is a continuation of the neighborhoods to the north. It's not a different place, it's not something that should be completely different. It's a neighborhood, and it really has a lot of similarities to that area to the north. To the west of the Martin Luther King Freeway, along Virginia Avenue, you have a very defined industrial corridor there. It's in correlation with the railroads and the access to the ports. If you go all the way up Virginia Avenue, you get to the Marine Terminal, and you come down here and you've got the rail yards. And so that area is a very industrial corridor. You also have the Westbury neighborhood that was redeveloped, and a lot of that kind of comes over Clark, or County Road, and influences the character in this area. And then you have the very obvious kind of civic center here with Norcom High School and the county service buildings that are located here. And so you kind of have a number of different districts, with London Boulevard kind of serving as an auto-oriented commercial corridor for the city. And when we talked to residents and interested property owners who have, you know, a vested interest in this area, a lot of people see this London Boulevard as a really essential corridor. It's a great place to grab lunch, you know, it's a, it is a gateway, and if that was not there, a lot of these neighborhoods around would feel like they were missing an amenity or service. And so it's not something that we would want to have go away, because it's serving a function in the community. And so we took the approach of, well, what, kind of what's the history? Why does the uptown district look the way it does? And how is it functioning, or how has it functioned? And what maybe do we want to have happen here? And so what came out of that, we did, I think it's about a 70-page technical report. We looked at everything from parcel sizes, property values, we dug deeper on this to determine what's underutilized versus vacant. And on this map, the white areas are either vacant or underutilized. And then everything else with kind of the shadowed buildings are the developed areas. And so as you can see, the highest concentrations of vacancy are along the High Street corridor, and you have some in the Cottage Place neighborhood and in the industrial neighborhood as an impact of the highway and the properties that were used for that. And now, now that the highway's built, you have some opportunity here for something to go back in. And so I think we came up with six-character areas, and this was the product of the first round of public engagement, as well as our background research. And so we used these six areas as the guide for the recommendations. And we looked at each area. In the report itself, which is available online, it's on the comprehensive plan website, the buildoneportsmith.org, so you can access this. It's actually, we've got a web version up, so it's easy to navigate online, or you can print it out. But we looked at the existing land uses for each area and broke them down to kind of establish what that existing pattern and character is. And then we established a vision for each area based on that. So this area, which is the Business West, it's primarily commercial and institutional uses, and then lots of industrial. You have a few residential components that are residual after the highway split. And so the idea is, let's try to move this towards more business, more institute, or more industrial, excuse me, and more commercial. So the recommendations for this area are to allow for that, but to not, basically, we want to protect the homes that are there. We want to allow the people who live there to continue living there, but should they want to sell their property for commercial development, that would be very consistent with a rezoning.
And the boundary is the MLK and Virginia Avenue?
Approximately, yeah, the railroad here. And we, this is just within the D2 district, so there is potential to look at the adjacent zoning districts as well. But yes, that's MLK there, and then this is Turnpike Road, and the railroad runs here.
Where's Virginia?
Virginia...
It's going to be up to the left.
It's up here. It kind of runs like that, and probably here as well. And this is Confederate Avenue.
Virginia doesn't cross.
Aren't you also including a horizontal leg down here?
Yes, so along County Street.
To South County.
Yeah, and this, this part is really tricky, because, you know, these homes here, they back up against the rail yard, and, but they're also, you know, directly across the street from other residential properties. So again, this is an area where the idea that, as long as those houses are there and people want to be living in them, they should be maintained that way. But if at some point somebody wanted to do something with those, commercial uses would probably be appropriate there. And so, so in each...
Did you give any thought to take it further east to Constitution?
To, yeah, okay, to here. There was some discussion about that. The reason we didn't do that is we had a lot of residents from the neighborhood come out and talk specifically about what they wanted to see in this area. And a lot of people wanted to see that held as residential.
Isn't that primarily J. Terrace?
Actually, it's Cottage Place.
It's Cottage Place.
Cottage Place, okay.
What, I mean, what's, what's left of Cottage Place?
I mean, take, take the intersection Cottage and, I mean, Constitution and High, that's an empty lot.
Yeah, this area. So we did talk about, here, actually, let me go to the next area. So that area ended up in what we called the Uptown West area. And the primary recommendation here is to strengthen the neighborhood fabric, because this neighborhood has been hit kind of hard by two major road improvements. London Boulevard kind of sections them off from the neighborhoods to the north, and now the Martin Luther King Elevated Highway kind of creates a distinctive wall between that and the industrial development to the west. And so there was a lot of requests from the people who lived in this neighborhood to see that neighborhood structure strengthened and maintained. So the recommendation here is to try to do that with as much character-enhancing ability as we can, so that the infill that happens here is compatible with that neighborhood feeling. We do recommend, I think, you know, the possibility of some smaller professional offices or neighborhood-serving commercial would be appropriate here. But that was, it was very much discussed, and we had probably the strongest contingent of people who participated in this process were residents of this area. The civic center area, we don't really have a lot of changes to that, and those are the kinds of uses that are potentially permitted in a lot of your other zoning districts. So this area, the idea would really be to maintain the civic presence here and potentially look at options or opportunities to bring more civic uses into this area in the future. And so that's one of our key recommendations for the overall implementation.
Not to be nitpicky, can you go back to...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Off of High Street, perpendicular to Norcom High Street, south of High Street.
Mm-hmm, here.
Okay. Did you think about taking that line to the east, to include that block?
Here, we did.
We looked at it, and we decided not to, because it's in a flood zone, and from a residency standpoint, we didn't think it would make sense to put city buildings in a flood zone.
We've been doing it for 200...
I'll stop now.
That actually was one of the things we talked about, we kind of went back and forth on that, and, you know, both, both the blocks there. So, I mean, it is potential, I mean, I think there is potential that that could be a revised recommendation, but at this point, this draft of the plan is looking at this, staying in the civic area. Now, what we didn't, what we did not do is, we didn't exclude civic uses from any of the other areas. So London Boulevard, I mean, we did, we did not do a future land use map, so we didn't go parcel by parcel. see that neighborhood structure strengthened and maintained. So the recommendation here is to try to do that with as much character-enhancing ability as we can, so that the infill that happens here is compatible with that neighborhood feeling. We do recommend, I think, you know, the possibility of some smaller professional offices or neighborhood-serving commercial would be appropriate here. But that was, it was very much discussed, and we had probably the strongest contingent of people who participated in this process were residents of this area. The Civic Center area, we don't really have a lot of changes to that, and those are the kinds of uses that are potentially permitted in a lot of your other zoning districts. So this area, the idea would really be to maintain the civic presence here and potentially look at options or opportunities to bring more civic uses into this area in the future. And so that's one of our key recommendations for the overall implementation.
Not to be nitpicky, can you go back to...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Off of High Street, perpendicular to Norcom High Street, south of High Street.
Mm-hmm, here.
Okay. Did you think about taking that line to the east to include that block?
We did.
We, we looked at it, and we decided not to because it's in a flood zone, and from a residency standpoint, we didn't think it would make sense to put city buildings in a flood zone.
Oh, we've been doing it for 200 years.
Flash stop now.
That, that actually was one of the things we talked about. We kind of went back and forth on that, and, you know, both, both the blocks there. So, I mean, it is potential, I mean, I think there is potential that that could be a revised recommendation, but at this point, this draft of the plan is looking at this, staying in the civic area. Now, what we didn't, what we did not do is, we didn't exclude civic uses from any of the other areas. So London Boulevard, I mean, we did, we did not do a future land use map. So we didn't go parcel by parcel and say, this should be commercial, this should be residential. We looked at the broader areas. And so both the London Boulevard area, as well as the High Street Corridor, we think institutional civic uses would be appropriate in those areas. But from a character standpoint, the building configurations, the lot configurations are just a little bit different in those two areas.
Is that where the medical office is going in?
Yeah, that, that previous.
The previous spring.
Yeah. If you could go back to the previous.
Yeah.
That lot, right, come up.
These here.
Yeah.
That area. Okay.
Which is, in my mind, a civic use.
It is.
Right.
It was always gauged as that.
Okay.
Well, it's also a prime location in the center of the city. Geographically, that's the center of the city as opposed to here.
Years ago, there was a discussion, the City Hall would go, I mean, 20 years ago.
In the current comprehensive plan.
It's in the current comprehensive plan, this one?
And we do, we do make reference to, I mean, we didn't have the scope to say, we're going to do a study and say, this is the place to put City Hall. But we did refer to conducting a study to see if there is potential to locate more city services in this area.
But isn't flooding still a concern?
It is. And I'm trying to remember if I had a good map in here, probably, probably in the other presentation, you can see that the, kind of, the flood plain kind of just comes down.
Where the creek comes up there.
Yeah. So we had the Civic Center, then we have London Boulevard. And London Boulevard, we, our assessment is that this serves currently as a major commercial corridor. It has automotive-oriented uses, but you have really pretty good access management. There's still plenty of accommodation for pedestrians in this area. And so rather than try to fit a square peg in a round hole, we've, we've said, the recommendations for this area should maintain those things, just keeping in mind your context about design of the site layout and everything, but maintaining those, those services. And then the, the self-storage facility that's here, there's certainly nothing wrong with that, but if and as development around this area increases, that is likely a property that could have a higher use at some point, and it's a fairly substantially sized property. And so that's one of the areas where we thought, you know, let's think about what could go there. Not saying that this has to change immediately, but there are some potential opportunities there. And then this area also is a pretty good kind of blending between the neighborhood and the commercial corridors as well. And then High Street, which I think our, our general feeling on that is, if you're going to have higher-density mixed-use development in this area, this is the location where that's appropriate. And it would be nice to have a continuation of what you have in downtown on High Street, east of Effingham, to kind of continue that out here and really open up the opportunities for some more housing potential in that area. Because one of the things that I think is really, I'm seeing it in national trends, and I'm seeing it in a lot of other urban environments like Portsmouth, is you have to get those rooftops up in order to support the entertainment and commercial uses that you want in a downtown environment like this. So this is really a great opportunity, because it is in the center, center of your city. It's accessible to all of the things you have down here that are so great. If, if you had, if I could get an apartment here, I would want to live here in the city. Like, this is a nice, like, that's what people want, is close to the amenities. And if you had a, you know, an extension of your entertainment district, I think that would be a great opportunity there. And it also keeps the higher-intensity residential a little bit more secluded from the single-family neighborhoods, which I know is often a challenge, because people don't want to have a high-rise right next to their single-family neighborhood. So that was our recommendation here. Maybe look for the taller buildings to go in this area. Less auto-oriented, more kind of, just like you have on High Street, east of Effingham, you know, focus on a pedestrian environment where people want to walk and, and have access to the services. And then I think also, things like civic uses that could mix in there, whether it's museums or other city buildings. But one of the things we heard a lot was some kind of a learning technical center that could maybe play off of the location with Norcom High School, to kind of find something that maybe is more of a community space. There are these things called maker spaces that are out there, and we heard ideas about that. But those are the kinds of things that might take some cultivation over a couple of years, but this would be the place that a lot of people thought that's, those kinds of ideas worked. And you have a lot of opportunity here, because you don't have a lot of built, occupied structures. And then there's the County Street, which is really just the north side of County Street, the blocks on the north side between County and King. And a lot of this is very new residential development. So we do not anticipate a lot of change there. So a lot of this would be, the recommendation really would be to make sure it's as compat, the zoning for this area is as compatible as possible with the Westbury Neighborhood regulations, because it's very similar in character, and it has such a close connection to that development. So the things that we looked at, we all, in addition to looking at land use and the zoning itself, like, what could these areas be zoned? And in the report itself, we say very specifically, each of these areas, we would recommend using zoning from an existing residential district with a few minor changes, your existing industrial development standards. So those specific recommendations are in the report. But then we had general recommendations. And one of the things that I think our, our assessment came across was, there's a way to incentivize infill development. And the primary way in doing that is removing obstacles to infill development. And so we did get feedback that the development approval process is challenging, and we know that a lot of that had to do with the way the D2 was written and being implemented. But if it's very clear to people what they're allowed to do here, and it's not an eight-month process to get that approval, that makes it more affordable, and infill development happens much quicker. The idea of supporting high, or higher-density market rate and affordable housing in this area, I think is really important, because again, you want a population that's here all the time to support those businesses that you want to be able to go in here. And so finding ways to get multifamily housing, or even higher-density, single-family, two-family stuff in this area is really important. One of the lessons that I have learned from projects all over the place is, when you have an area that's struggling a little bit to get on its feet, some very strategic, even very small, strategic public investments can go a long way. We talk a lot about pedestrian improvements in this area, some street trees, things like that, and maybe partnering with a neighborhood, a civic league or something to do those kinds of projects. It's very noticed, and when the city cares about a neighborhood, the residents and the property owners care about that neighborhood. And so we've seen a lot of success with that. We'd like to see some improvements to the pedestrian connectivity between the neighborhoods, making this more of a walkable connection. You have a lot of the assets there, it's just, you know, kind of connecting the dots. One of the other big suggestions is, for those properties that are city-owned, is doing a public RFP process. Once you have your vision set, to find the right developer to partner with to do those projects, because that can, it doesn't really require a lot of resources from the city, but it gives you the opportunity to say, this is the development we want to have happen here. And then the relocation of additional city offices. And then the other question that we have is, as the Business West area may increase, its freight traffic or other things, is to look at High Street and County Street in about five years, and do a traffic study, and see if they're right-sized for the development that's happening in this area. And then we put together a prioritization of those actions, what we thought you should kind of tackle first, what needs to happen in the next 18 months to three years, and then what could be kind of started in the five-year range. And these are just, you know, kind of based on what the input we had showed priorities towards, and kind of what are the little, like, kind of the low-hanging fruit, what could we tackle first? And obviously, updating the zoning regulations, which you're already in process of doing, is a really important piece of that. So I'm happy to take some questions on that. And again, the full studies are online.
Office feasible is a footbridge over London Boulevard.
That's my question.
I have grand cricket kids that live at Parkview West, and they go across London Boulevard to that food line.
Uh-huh.
That is a tremendous street for somebody 12 years and below.
Certainly is.
Trying to cross.
Yeah.
So that would be an excellent idea.
Yeah. Because it, I mean, London Boulevard really does cut the neighborhoods off from each other, because it's not accessible by foot, even though you're right there, right across the street. And so between that and then improving some of the connectivity along County, I think, you know, some smaller projects, a footbridge probably isn't a small project, but I think it could go a long way to, to making, making this feel more connected to the other person.
Martin Luther King Extension eliminated one footbridge that went across 264. Could they take that and put it home? I'm just joking.
Yeah, it would be, it would have been good if that brick, that had included pedestrian access. Alicia.
The transportation study for High Street and County Street was, is that, because when we had our coffee talk, a lot of people talked about bringing the trolley back to...
Yeah, so there are a number of things. One of our, one of our thoughts was, and County's a little bit narrower than High, but, you know, how do you use that right-of-way width, depending on what's built along there? I think it's a little premature to say, today, we should do a study on how that should be designed, but as development happens, you may start noticing more demand for transit in an area, and maybe the trolley line is, is a solution to that. You do currently, I think, there are at least, there's at least one, if not two, transit lines that do run along High Street. But the challenge right now is, there's really nothing for, except for the civic uses, there's not anything there for people to get off. And it's, and if you look at the, the distance to walk from a neighborhood, it's still pretty great. And so again, those pedestrian connections would be a big part of that.
Is this neighborhood beautification, is that something in the next 18 months to five years?
Um, let's see, where did I put that? I mean, that's...
That was on a previous page.
Yeah. I think it's, you know, one of the things...
It's a second.
The second bullet.
Yeah, yeah, up here, yep.
Well, there it is.
I, it could start earlier. I think, you know, rather than saying, you know, tomorrow, the city needs to go out and do this, I think it might be a good idea to seed that idea and say, we want to work with you, and maybe there's some, some things that we could do along here. But at the same time, you also need a little bit of, you know, some of these areas, like High Street, you might need a project to kind of take foot, you know, get a foothold in there. And then once, once the community starts kind of filling in, then you have more people and more businesses that want to do those things. And so if the city is an engaged partner in that, I think that could be...
From Effingham to the waterfront. High Street is, has this kind of sort of beautification. I like the way they lined up the trees. And that looks real good all year long.
Yeah.
Now, from Effingham going the other way, it's not exactly the same.
Yeah. And one of the examples that I would point out, in Cincinnati, where I'm from, we had it in an area where the, a few of the property owners, and they had a CDC at the time that helped do this, but we had a lot of vacant buildings. And so there was a group, it was a nonprofit group that went through, and all the boarded-up windows, they painted them. They just painted like curtains on them and like flower boxes, and then there was a, a big effort where flower boxes were put out. And so that was something that the city didn't do, but the city fully supported that effort. And it was a nice, it was a, a good boost, because once that had been done, people started to look at that area differently. And so the beautification efforts, I think, could be anything from something like that to planting street trees, or improving the curb and, and tree lawn sections. So there's a lot of options in that.
Norfolk has done that too, with murals on the sides of buildings. That would have been called graffiti years ago, it looks real good now.
Commissioner G has a...
So with these shifts and adjustments, did you guys take into account anything as far as green space, recreation parks, any of those type of things?
We did a little bit. So I think on a couple of places, we, we show some parks that are there, or it's green space now, and that should be maintained. One of the things that we do talk about, I think, in the individual recommendations are that you want some public spaces. And so as you're designing redevelopment, that public spaces are important, and private open space is also important. But each, each of those areas has a little bit different level of open space. I don't think we made any recommendations for like, you know, a whole block to stay as park, because one of our directives here was to find more economically viable uses for vacant property. Yeah. But, you know, a lot of communities do interim, you know, community gardens or things like that on lots until somebody comes along and says, I'm ready to should develop this. So ideas like that are feasible as well.
And along with where you stated about the higher density along the London Corridor and some of those other areas, did, did that take into account with the pedestrian changes, also bike lanes and things like that too? Because that brings in a different type of tenant who does look for some of those things to make that travel from that corridor down to the, the, uh, High Street.
Yeah, I, I can't point to them directly, because I think in each area, we have slightly different recommendations. But thinking about a complete street, so the, the idea that you have bikes, you have people walking, you have people coming in by car, you have transit lines running, that that creates kind of a different dynamic between the street and the built areas. So in thinking about High Street, High Street would be your primary pedestrian corridor, whereas London would still be your automotive corridor, because that's how it functions now. It's a major, you know, you have a lot of traffic that comes into the city on London. And so to choke that down and say, we're going to make this, you know, a great place to walk, when you've got High Street a block away, doesn't make a lot of sense.
One thing I would say, and I, I point you towards, is there's a growing desire for networks of, of like bike paths and everything like that, not just for the purpose of getting from point A to point B, but also recreational, so like, with a five-mile path.
And that's, I think that's a really good point, and that's something we're looking at in the comp plan, because right now, you have the regional bike trail that comes through, but it really doesn't do much service to most of the city. You've got, you know, that one connection, and it's, it's pretty, pretty, it's kind of central, and that's...
It's kind of dangerous too.
And it doesn't, it doesn't...
I'd say it's about that big.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't really change things for the neighborhoods. You've got to find a way to get people from the neighborhoods to that. And so I think in this area, when we look at the Comprehensive Plan, networks are going to be really important, and, and this area stays part of the city in the Comprehensive Plan.
Dr. Pat.
Mayor, if you look at the prioritization of actions under short terms, we are working on most of, of the short-term items identified. In addition, in the FY 2018 budget, the Neighborhood Incentive Program was approved, of which we are putting the final touches on unveiling, where civic organizations can bring forward proposals for projects that they would like to see in beautification and upgrading of their communities. So that will be unveiled and ready for process to begin as early as August. So we're, we're making great strides in, in these areas here.
Bring them forward to the mayor's office, your office.
We, we are putting the process in place, and it will be available and online as to how citizens will be able to...
What the process will be.
Yes, finishing that up.
How about the, the marketing of the vacant properties? You know, we've had, in these areas... You know, we've had, in these areas, we've had vacant land studies that, I think, as this presentation shows, we still have a lot of vacant properties in those areas. And vacant properties obviously afford us a tax incentive to get them on the tax rolls and to get them developed and to get more traffic in the area, which begets more investment. But where is, where does that come in?
And, and this is an abbreviated version of what's in the full plan and study. I believe the recommendation, this one here...
Yeah.
In the study itself, it says aggressively marketing these sites to a national audience. So we did, we did include that kind of language in the recommendations in terms of the ways to do that. We also prepared an economic resources memo that is accessory to this. So it kind of highlights all of the incentives and other programs that the city could use to kind of bolster the awareness of, of these properties. So there's kind of another set of tools there for you all to, to consider.
And I say that because some of these properties have been vacant and needing redevelopment for a number of years, decades, if you may.
I have some that's been vacant for 20 already.
Absolutely.
Dr. Pat.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Planning, Economic Development and PRHA have been working on vacant study, vacant property study that we are very close to. Mr. Baldwin, when will we propose this to come to council? They've been working on it now for almost a year. And we're talking properties that were acquired since 1970 through CDBG funds and then cities' vacant properties, which are hundreds of parcels of property in our city. I would say by the mid to end of August, it's going to come forth. We've been working on, even if it's a summer.
That's correct. I mean, what we've been looking at, some of the properties that have less economic development potential than, than the ones that do. It's a pretty robust list of properties.
We have a lot of properties that we'll be bringing forth for your review.
But you're talking about properties that are privately owned also, are you not?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Public and private properties.
Yes. Yes. Commissioner Young, go.
You know that we've got about 800 apartments that have just come online in the last 12 months. Have you, has your study shown any impact from those apartments? Because you're, you're saying, you know, the more people you bring down here, the more viable the neighborhood becomes. And, and, I mean, we've, we've got the chicken, do we have the egg?
Yeah. So, so what, what I have seen, we talked to a lot of the apartment managers and everything to kind of get a sense of how, how are they doing? They've brought all these apartments online, how are they doing? And I think we, just in our kind of general survey of the people we talked to, it seemed like everyone was in like the 93% to 95% occupancy. So like, as soon as, as soon as an apartment was available, they were leasing them. So there is demand here for that. And so the other thing is, is that, you know, you don't have, as a city, you don't have room to move out. And so you have really nice-sized suburban-style neighborhoods, but you don't have a high concentration of urban housing in, in the core. And so that is what a lot of people are looking for. So the market is there. And I, I mean, I, I am not a housing expert, but a lot of the reports that I'm looking at from ULI and other places is all households, whether it's millennial households, empty-nester households, young urban professional households, even traditional families are looking towards lower-maintenance housing options that are close to amenities. And so, you know, if there's any chance that you could build family-style multifamily housing, I saw a report from Toronto about how that's their big gap right now. You know, I think giving people options of where they want to live and access to these great amenities is a big asset that Portsmouth has.
Other questions?
Just one more comment. I just wanted to make sure that we tap into our partnership with economic development because they have a grant for a program, it's called Windows of Opportunity, where they take that fund and they partner with the business that want to make the windows look a little better, like you were saying, they paint murals or they are doing other things. But they wrap the windows with decorative things like ports with like ships and our sails, our circle of sail that we're going to have. So they are beautifying those vacant buildings with things like that through that Windows of Opportunity grant through economic development.
That's great.
There's funding available already there for them.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all.
Dr. Pat.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, this concludes our presentations for this evening.
Okay. And that concludes our agenda for tonight. We'll return and see everybody at 5 o'clock tomorrow for our one second...
And the commission is adjourned also.
You can stay if you like.